So if you guys take a minute and go to public. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Charles Shorter. Trustee Henry Berger.
Present.
Trustee Myra Lenaras Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Martin Burke. Professor Farnaz Kagabadi. The faculty alternate. Great. And welcome to our new student representative, Masarat Lamia.
Hi, present.
Great. And Denise Reyes, the student alternate. Trustee Timothy Hunter. And I think we're being joined today by trustee Schwartz.
I am here, correct?
Great, thanks Barry. Okay, Jill.
We're ready?
Yep.
So we have a quorum. This public meeting of the Committee on Academic Affairs is now called to order. On March 7th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1 which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in-public, in-person access to meetings, and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to review or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via teleconference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar or the agenda is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional information may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone could hear. I would like to ask the secretary to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery.
Okay, members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Gail. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's great to be here with the CAPRA Committee. I, for the interest of time, just have a couple of things I would want to share with the committee. As you all know, we are keeping track of all of the academic continuity guidance via our coronavirus portal at cuny.edu. The latest update on academic continuity guidance, update number 13, was published on May 31st. I will highlight just a couple of the most salient policy issues that have been presented in that update. Number one is that the US Department of Education, the Middle States Commission on Higher Education, and the New York State Education Department all have issued guidance for Fall 2020 waiving existing requirements for institutions to register their programs as online programs in the event that more than 50% of the courses are taught online. Now with our Spring 2020 semester behind us, for those schools that are not in the 12-6 calendar system, we are pivoting our attention to our credit no credit policy implementation, and we are working hard to ensure that all of our students who would like to exercise that option which was afforded to them by a Board of Trustees resolution, that they can in fact do so. And finally, just want to share that on the research front, in the same way that we have provided guidance on the orderly reduction of onsite research early on during the pandemic, we are now, we have recently issued guidance on a four-stage framework to help our researchers across our campuses to start thinking about how we would, in an orderly fashion, restart onsite research in accordance with all public policy and health safeguards that may be in existence as we progress in the reopening of New York City. So with that, Madam Chair, I conclude my report.
Well, thank you very much. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We will take up the following items for approval. Action Item 2A, which is the approval of the minutes of the April 27th, 2020 meeting. I move the approval of action item 2A. Do I have a second?
Second, Berger.
Any discussion? We will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose.
I just want to be sure before we do that, that Martin, you just joined?
It took a while, but I'm in, yes.
Okay, so we just want to be sure that your vote gets, that we know for the voting purposes. I apologize. Go ahead, sorry.
So again, we're voting on action item 2A, and please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, sorry, Myra?
Yeah, this is Masarat Lamia, and this is your number, and I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay, thank you. Any other abstentions or no votes? Hearing none, the item passes. Action Item 2B, the Policy Calendar. We are now going to take up Items 2B.1 for approval. Policy Item 2B.1 is a resolution requesting establishment of an AS in Computer Science at Hostos Community College. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. As demonstrated by numerous studies by the Census Bureau and the National Science Foundation, the abundant professional opportunities in the world of computer science have not reached underrepresented minority students, particularly those in the African-American, Hispanic, and Native American communities. With this in mind, Hostos' aim is to provide access to computer science opportunities and is committed to this new computer science program, which will impart the broad knowledge and experience related to computer systems and technologies. Hostos anticipates movement of current students from allied fields such as mathematics and engineering to the computer science major once it is implemented, and the college will also recruit new students into the major as they enter the school. Hostos' current faculty have an abundance of experience in teaching these computer science courses. I will now invite Hostos campus representatives to provide additional input regarding this proposal if they are in fact on the line.
Jose Luis, they were not, Rachel did not give us their names.
Then I turn it over back to Madam Chair.
Okay, so, thank you. I move the approval of action item 2B.1. Do I have a second?
Second, Martin Burke.
Any discussion?
I guess it's a question to the Executive Vice Chancellor rather than the representatives from Hostos. EVC Cruz, a simple question about the articulation agreements. I noticed, I noted the proposal that one is underway with John Jay College. Would you happen to know how far along that process is?
I do not know how far the process is, but just from my own experience, recent experience at Lehman College, and knowing the CUNY 2X efforts to double the number of computer science graduates, I know that there is a lot of work going on to make those sure that those articulation agreements are done sooner rather than later, but I will be happy to provide this committee with additional information prior to the full board committee meeting on the 29th.
I would very much appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So hearing none, we will now vote. Please again, only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are now going to take up Items 2B.2 for approval. Policy Item 2B.2 is a resolution requesting establishment of an MS in taxation at Queens College. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. The health information profession has made a rapid transition from a paper-based record management discipline to an industry that mandates well-educated professionals in informatics and health information services, requiring specialized skills necessary to utilize electronic data. Likewise, health information management professionals must have the body of knowledge and practice to ensure the completeness and integrity of health information to facilitate real-time healthcare delivery. The proposed program would be an interdisciplinary academic program at the intersection of computer and information science and technology, health services administration, that scales up from the success of CUNY's SDF bachelor's degree in this area. In addition to learning the technical aspects of healthcare data and information management, students will learn how to develop strong management skills related to the profession.
Provost Cruz? I think we're talking about the MS in taxation at Queens College. I think you're talking about the next item.
You are correct, and my apologies for that. They are both great programs, by the way.
I'm sure.
But let's take them, let's take them in order. So in terms of the MS in taxation at Queens College, and my apologies again. Over the past few years, Queens College has received many requests from students interested in a Master of Science in Taxation program, and according to the US Bureau of Labor Statistics, the need for tax accountants is expected to grow 6% from 2018 to 2028. Currently, Baruch is the only CUNY college offering an MS in taxation, which has a different population that is more focused on the legal issues and policies surrounding taxation. However, the MS in taxation program at Queens College will attend to practical workplace issues such as corporate tax strategy. Queens College has a large accounting and economics department, with students seeking formal graduate training in programs that can both satisfy professional educational requirements and enhance their opportunities for accelerated career advancement. Therefore, this program will serve not only Queens College students, but students from Long Island and other CUNY colleges in the area, enabling for Queens College to build a strong program that leverages existing faculty and curriculum.
Thank you. I would now move the approval of Policy Item 2B.2. Do I have a second?
Second, Berger.
Okay, now, any discussion?
A question from Martin Burke to EVC Cruz again.
Sure.
And that's relating to the program at Baruch. While I'm aware that other programs don't have a veto, are, can you inform the committee if in the evaluation process our colleagues at Baruch raised any concerns about possible overlap or competition from Queens?
My understanding is that they have not, otherwise we would not have proceeded with presentation to the board, but I will again have to come back before the next full board meeting to validate that information. And my apologies for not having staff from the colleges represented in these discussions. We had been instructed that college representatives would have to listen to the live streaming, and other than using a lifeline to call a friend, I'm afraid I will have to provide that information after the fact.
And Provost Cruz, this is Jill O'Donnell Torme. Just to clarify, there are no other MSs in taxation throughout CUNY except for the one at Baruch now, Queens?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So any other points of discussion? If not, we will now vote. Please again, only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose.
Jill, this is Barry. Can I ask a question? I was on mute, I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, sure, Barry, sorry.
Jose Luis, do you, do you know, or have you read anything about how large the folks at Queens College think this MS program can become?
They believe that it will be a fairly large program for them, given the increased interest that they have seen from the current students and the increase in the number of jobs that are expected in the next several years, over the next decade. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, but can certainly make those available to the committee.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Sorry, Jill.
Can I, can I, can I use a point of historical reference?
Of course, Chancellor.
So in my previous life, this was some of the programs that at Queens College were being considered, and this, this was one of the ones that based on labor market data, which, and again, this is a year ago, right? So, and, and there's a lot of interest in folks from the, not just Queens, but the Long Island, about a master's program that has high quality and is affordable. So they were, that's, it, that, it, part of the strategy is to fill part of that niche, which at the time, when the numbers were explored, when I was president, you know, looked very promising. So I'm giving a little bit of dated context, but I remember the program well.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any other discussion? Or if not, we will now vote. Please again, only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, this item passes. We are now going to take up Item 2B.3 for approval, which is a resolution requesting establishment of an MS in Health Information Management at the School of Professional Studies. Provost Cruz, can you provide us some background, please?
Yes, thank you, and this is such a great program that I got ahead of myself earlier. So please bear with me. The health information profession has made a rapid transition from a paper-based record management discipline to an industry that mandates well-educated professionals in informatics and health information services, requiring specialized skills necessary to utilize electronic data. Likewise, health information management professionals must have the body of knowledge and practice to ensure the completeness and integrity of health information to facilitate real-time healthcare delivery. The proposed program will be an interdisciplinary academic program at the intersection of computer and information science and technology, health services administration, that scales up from the success of CUNY SDF's bachelor's degree program in this area. In addition to learning the technical aspects of healthcare data and information management, students will learn how to develop strong management skills related to the profession. The proposed program will be accredited by the Commission on Accreditation for Health Informatics and Information Management Education, which is an accrediting body that has an international reputation for excellence.
Okay, thank you. So I now move the approval of Policy Item 2B.3. Do I have a second?
Second, Berger.
Any discussion? It seems like a very useful program and very much needed at this time, and I guess there's no competition from any other colleges for this master's degree, I would presume.
That's correct.
Okay, so hearing no discussion, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, the item passes. We are now going to take up Item 2B.4 for approval. Policy Item 2B.4 is a resolution requesting the amendment and replacement of the policy guidelines for centers, institutes, consortia, and special initiatives. Again, I call on Provost Cruz to provide us more information.
Thank you. The Boards of Trustees Policy Guidelines for the City University of New York Centers, Institutes, Consortium, and Special Initiatives was adopted in 1995. It establishes desirable and necessary policies to provide for the orderly administration of centers, institutes, and universities endeavors, organizing research, instruction, and training initiatives that do not operate under the established rules and regulations that govern departments. The university wishes to strengthen the policies that govern these entities and outline specific processes related to the approval, financing, accountability, and evaluation of these bodies. The proposed amendment to the policy ensures that centers, institutes, and consortia ultimately support the mission of CUNY colleges and the university, with notable revisions that include, one, the creation of a new center at the university that requires approval by the president of the host college; two, the creation of a new institute or consortium at the university requiring approvals at the campus and university levels; three, mandating that centers, institutes, and consortia must enrich and support the core mission of the university; four, mandating that centers, institutes, and consortia must aim to become fiscally self-sufficient through external fundraising and funding plans that must specify how the entity will aim to sustain its activities and operation. In addition, tax-abbey funding when provided will be limited in duration and extent; mandating that centers, institutes, and consortium must specify and enforce term limits for directors or officers; mandating that centers, institutes, and consortium must make annual reports publicly available; mandating that centers, institutes, and consortium must be evaluated every five years, and ensuring that annual reports be made publicly available at college and central office online repositories. In summary, the university intends for this policy amendment to improve the approval processes, financing, accountability, and evaluation of centers, institutes, and consortia. Consequently, upon approval of the amendment, the chancellor would decide and implement a recertification process that would ensure that all existing centers, institutes, and consortia comply with the amended policy.
Thank you. So I move the approval of Policy Item 2B.4. Do I have a second?
Madam Garcia, a second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, may I inquire?
Sure, go ahead.
Henry Berger. In my reading of the policy, it appears that the board is no longer involved in the approval process, and I recall within the last year that the board played a significant role in considering a proposal from Brooklyn College. I'm wondering why the board has been removed from the approval process and whether that is an appropriate action at this point.
Provost Cruz?
Yes, so the, the current policy calls for centers to be approved through the shared governance processes at the colleges, and that institutes, the one you mentioned earlier, be approved at the central office level by the chancellor. The connection and oversight of the Board of Trustees would remain through an annual report that would be presented through CAPRA, which is an addition that we hope to include in the current policy as an amendment, and I know trustee Burke will present that at a due point in time. And the, of course, the, ensuring that the accountability of these centers, from financing, strategic planning, and meeting all of their obligations are kept in place, would be under the purview of the chancellor, who in turn would be accountable to the board, reporting annually.
So Martin, I know you have an amendment, oh sorry, do you want to continue? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this because I think at this point we should not be removing the board from these approval processes. Simply putting it in the CAPRA report is, you know, there aren't enough of these that we should be removed, and simply putting it in the CAPRA report among everything else, I don't think is adequate. I think the role the board has played in the past was important, and I don't want to lose that role. Henry, this is, this is Barry Schwartz. I recall the discussion about centers and institutes from a meeting, I think it was even longer than a year ago.
Yes, it was.
I'm not sure your recollection is correct, and that is to say, I don't think the board ever approved or disapproved. I think the old policy, which was confusing, had a report made to this committee, and that was it, along with the chancellor and the provost being made aware. And where the confusion lay the last time around was that, I think it was an institute was being created that crossed over from Brooklyn College and affected other places, and there was concern about a lack of information about that. So I think what's been accomplished here is what was intended by that discussion, and that is to allow the people who know something about this, first with regard to centers confined to a particular college, the president of that college, and then as to things which could cross over, institutes and consortia, to include and have a role for the provost and the chancellor. So I think it's, it's the right approach, and I don't think the board ever did approve, and I don't think the board should be approving as these things are defined. But let me just add one other thing to the annual reports. I think we should make it clear that the annual report must be prepared and publicly disseminated within some finite period of time after the end of the fiscal year to which the report relates, because otherwise these reports could be a year late, and that's not what you intend, I don't believe. So whether it's 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, there should be some specific date certain related to the year to which the report relates, where the report gets compiled and made public. Thank you. Barry, if I may, my recollection is just slightly different, and that is that when this was presented, and I think you're right, it was to the committee, the questions that were raised, many of them by you, resulted in Brooklyn College going back and re-looking at what they were doing. We're going to lose that opportunity. We're not going to be able to raise the questions before the institute is approved. And I think it's more important for institutes and for centers, I agree with you on that, but we're losing the opportunity to raise those questions upon cross-campus entities, and what we're going to be presented with is a fait accompli, and I just don't think that's appropriate. I, you know, I think that we have an obligation to look at those kinds of things.
I do agree with you that the annual reports are kind of after the fact, I mean, and I do agree that they should be timely, but it does sound like these will no longer come in front of CAPRA for a recommendation and approval? Is that correct? Are we reading that right?
Martin Burke, if I could jump in. And while I don't like to be in a position of contradicting Barry Schwartz, the way the way the current MGP 1.09 is written, institutes, consortium, and special initiative are reviewed and approved first by the OAA, then by CAPRA, and finally sent on to the full board for approval. Whether or not they've been gone through, or whether or not they've actually been approved is a different question. Under the proposed revisions, after review and approval by the OAA, the recommendations will be sent to the chancellor for his approval or disapproval. So I agree that for those skeptical about this, it would end with the chancellor. Chair, totally, I'd like to propose an amendment, but I don't, not sure the amendment should be proposed while discussion is still going forward.
Yeah, Martin, if I may, you're perfectly free to contradict me anytime, because I'm not always right, that's for sure, but my memory of this 109, which I don't have in front of me, is when you parsed it and went through it, the so-called approval really wasn't happening, and it was getting swallowed up in the chancellor's report, and you knew nothing about it. I'm very comfortable with, I'm very comfortable with this because I have a great deal of confidence in the person we hired to run the university, namely the chancellor, and the person that he hired to be in charge of curricula and curricular affairs, the provost. And that's the way I think it should run, and that's the role of the board, is to provide that kind of oversight. If we don't like what's happening, and if we don't like the level of reporting we're getting, we know how to make changes, but that, that, we shouldn't be involved in the minutia of the institutes, centers, and consortium. That's for the people who do it day by day, and that's not the board.
Yeah, well, Henry, the centers are a matter of the campuses and the presidents, and since the now lamented or un-lamented CUR is not mentioned in the Manual of General Policy, but it appears that's what did happen. Things came to CAPRA, then they got folded into the CUR, and then went to the overall board, and this clearly is not doing that. I do wonder, however, in terms of making the report, a report timely, and right now the language of the revision doesn't entail any report, things go to the chancellor, and the chancellor approves or disapproves. The individual college- The individual colleges or consortia are responsible, would be responsible for announcing the approval of the new institute, consortia, special initiative, and providing timely updating. But my amendment, and let me read it out if you would, "The chancellor shall report on the creation and approval of all new institutes, consortia, and special initiatives to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research annually." If we do that, then the action of the chancellery is on the record without the CAPRA or the full board getting into the finer-grained operations of institutes, consortia, and/or special initiatives.
So Jill, what you would need to do is to take a motion to see if you want to amend the resolution.
Okay.
And whether you can get a second for that, and then go ahead and vote on an amended resolution.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to put this amendment as read by Martin Burke to be into the... I guess it's into the policy item. And can I have a second on that?
This is Mr. Outlinia. I second that motion.
Okay. So now we can have, again, another discussion on this before we vote.
Right. Exactly. So we just want to be sure that it's clear what's being amended.
So, I actually have some questions... This is Mr. Outlinia, again. I have some questions about something that was mentioned by the provost, if I can ask that. I wanted to know what the recertification process timeline would be for current existing centers, institutes, and special initiatives. Was that thought out at the moment, or is that still something that the chancellery is deciding on?
So that would be, it's in one of the resolved processes of the proposed resolution. The chancellor will implement the new approval financing, accountability, and evaluation processes for these entities, and designing and implementing mandatory recertification process to ensure that all existing centers, institutes, consortia, and special initiatives meet the important compliance milestones starting in fall 2022. So we would use the next year to develop the recertification process and create a staggered way in which current centers and institutes would have an opportunity to recertify, and new proposed centers and institutes would have an opportunity to present their cases.
Charlie?
Fall 2022 is when we...
Sorry, Jose Luis, I just want to say, I think that Charlie just joined the call. Is that you, Charlie?
Yes, I'm on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
So, fall 2022 is when the certification processes who already have been implemented and the first recertifications would start being put in place.
Okay. And would that be, would it be possible to get a report on that once it's complete so that we're aware of what centers, institutes, consortia, special initiatives met the recertification or did not?
Of course. Yes. As that process evolves, we would be providing reports on that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, I think that Professor Burke's amendment is helpful. I still don't think it's adequate. As a board member, I don't want to be told that this has been done when we may want to raise questions, as we did the last time around, as to whether it should be done. And, you know, I don't want to give up that authority, certainly over the institutes. If it's a cross-campus, multi-campus institute, I think the board ought to be at least taking a look at it before it's approved.
Henry, the only thing I'll point out to you is that that approval, which you think you had and exercised, you never did because these things got swallowed up in the chancellor's report, not identified.
But Barry, didn't the CAPRA committee, I mean, back to the Brooklyn College, we stopped that, but CAPRA voted against that. So that never got-
The committee had to be advised. It was an information item to the committee. You didn't vote yea or nay, you were informed. And once you were informed, it got swallowed up in the chancellor's report, and that's the so-called approval that you think you had, Henry, you didn't. So what you're asking for is something that we never exercised before in an informed, knowledgeable way. You may think it's appropriate for the board to have it, in which case, there probably going to be further discussion, you know, at the chancellery level first to deal with that concern. I don't happen to share that concern. I think the way this is addressed, particularly with Martin's helpful amendment, is the way it should be. The people who are, you know, running the place, closest to these initiatives, closest to the institutes, closest to centers, make the determinations. And we evaluate those determinations with these annual reports. And we approve them by way of saying that there's a good idea, it makes sense. Or we say this doesn't make sense, you gotta go fix it.
I continue to disagree. It did come, you know, it did come before us, we did consider it. Because of the issues raised, it was taken back, and it was ultimately changed significantly. And I think that's the, you know, I think that was a beneficial and appropriate role we played, and I think we should continue to play that role as a board.
Martin, I was released. Go ahead.
No, just as a point of information, the Brooklyn proposal that we have been referring to was actually a center, not an institute.
That was going to be my position as well. So something good came out of an anomalous discussion at CAPRA. Centers don't fall under, never fell under CAPRA, but the Brooklyn College informational item led to this larger discussion.
But there was a full presentation by them to CAPRA. There was a full presentation about it.
Right. But they weren't, they were not, they were simply presenting it as an informational item. I'm not sure why it was ever on the agenda, since CAPRA could never vote on it.
They were asking for a vote.
Clearly, that discussion at CAPRA derailed it because it got pulled back.
They did ask for a vote. Yeah. And my memory of that center was that it went beyond the bounds of Brooklyn College, which is what got people interested in it.
Then it's not a center.
That was the discussion. Correct. Correct.
Again, that was, exactly.
Yeah. That's exactly right. But Martin, there was, either in the bylaws or in the, this other set of rules, which I can't remember what they're called.
Manual of General Policy.
Yes. There was a process that centers had to be presented to as an information item to this committee, period. Not voted upon by this committee, but presented to this committee. And now this new process makes it clear, makes it clear who is deciding these things, and the annual reports will make it plain to this committee what's happened, both at the center level, the institute level, and the consortia level. And the committee can address it at that point.
But Barry, now it's being presented after the fact rather than before the fact. And, you know, it's very hard to undo something that's already been done. It's much easier to have the input earlier to make sure that it's done correctly.
Again, correctly, I mean, that's what the chancellor's there for, that's what the provost's there for, and that's what these rules are there for. It's been identified in this new rule, what correct means. Correct means a certain number of trustees, they're independents, it has to be self-sustaining, it has to file reports. There's all sorts of definitions here as to what correct is. And that's the purpose of this. So I appreciate what you say, we just have a disagreement about it.
Okay. In terms of Henry's concern about oversight, there is a history to this particular item in the manual of general policy. Some of you might remember the Leonard Jeffries' imbroglio at City College in the 1990s over People of the Sun and People of the Snow. That led to quite a controversy. Professor Jeffries' center was closed down, and a new institute, the Institute for the Study of African and African-American Diaspora, was set up at what became the Graduate Center. And in the wake of that particular nasty moment in CUNY's history, the MGP was lined out with the language that we're talking about revising now. So our predecessors in the mid-1990s were concerned about board oversight of new centers, institutes, consortia, so on and so forth, which would make Henry's argument.
Right. So at this point-
Madam Chair, the only question I have is whether or not either the provost or the chancellor want to-
That's what I would say, too.
...address any of these topics that we have discussed.
Is there something that we should table and go back with a consensus from the chancellery on these two points, about which would be most appropriate, that they would be comfortable with? Because I do, I agree with both sides. I don't think we, the board, this is not what we do day in and day out. You know more, the chancellery and the people there know more about how to do this, so I agree with Barry on that. But I also agree that, once it's set up, as Henry says, it's very hard, I think, to dismantle something if there's problems, and it could be 12 months into it until we get the report that it happened. So those are two, I see value on both of those issues, but I think we might need a little bit more clarity from the chancellery.
Well, let me, for whatever it's worth, I mean, obviously, if, we presented the best set of guidelines that we think would be most advantageous to make sure that we have good accountability for the centers and the institutes that we have now, and to provide some ongoing transparency in their work moving forward, and then in the process of establishing them in the future. So in that sense, happy to get all the different perspectives on this one, but, I mean, this would be the best representation of what we think would be the best, the best policy.
Way forward.
Regarding the point about the doing and the undoing, right? If there's a new center that will be created, let's take that hypothetical road, right? That would mean that there'd be the process to do that, and that would take as long as the interested parties were able to get all the needed requirements to get that approval process done. And it wouldn't be more than a year, right? Is that much before the chancellor, particularly with this amendment that Martin has presented, would bring that new center to the attention of the trustees, at which time, if there were, you know, concerns either about whether we should have this center, right, in the more radical stream, or whether that it needs to be redefined or needs to be modified, it would happen right within the first year existence of that center. So it wouldn't be too difficult to either to undo it if there was a feeling that this was inappropriate, right? Or to modify the course before the center got its footing. So that'd be, you know, my parting response to that comment.
Well, that's helpful, I think. So if there's no more discussion, I think we should vote.
So you have to be, yeah, we just have to be clear that we're voting on-
On what we're voting on, right?
Right. Exactly. So you have an open, it was seconded a motion to-
To amend, to amend this resolution.
Right. Correct.
Madam Chair, just one last point about the undoing.
Yes, Barry.
Just one last point about the undoing. Right now, the way this is drafted, it calls for an evaluation, an evaluation at the end of a five-year period. I read that to mean an evaluation, which is a thumbs up or thumbs down, on what had been operating for the last five years. You know, perhaps if there's going to be reconsideration of this, some thought be given to a five-year period being reduced to maybe a three-year period. And maybe that would satisfy some people's concern about undoing. But I assume that evaluation meant, in good faith, an evaluation of the program, whether it's a center, whether it's an institute, or whether it's a consortia. And when it was being evaluated, it would either be a thumbs up or thumbs down based upon the five years of experience. I have nothing further to say on the matter. Thank you.
Well, Barry, I would agree with you on that. I would read that as an evaluation of the program. It doesn't really address, I don't think it's fair to evaluate an ongoing program in a year. I mean, I think that the question of if it should have been initiated in the first place seems to be what Henry is talking about. So I agree with you that the five-year that they've put in there, I would not suggest changing that because I think that's evaluating an existing center, institute, or consortia.
I agree with you.
So at this point, I think we would like to vote on the motion to amend the resolution as suggested by trustee Martin Burke. So again, I'm going to call for the vote. Again, only vote if you'd like to abstain or oppose to the amendment. Hearing none, I think we have passed, that we have agreed that we are amending this resolution. Now I'd like to call a second vote, which is to vote on the amended resolution, policy item 2B4. And again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
Burke opposes.
Hearing no other, the item passes. We are now going to take up item 2B5 for approval. Policy item 2B5 is a resolution requesting approval of the policy for the use of credit for prior learning. I now call on Provost Cruz to give us further background.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I may, before speaking to this credit-for-prior-learning policy, I just want to circle back, if it's okay, to a couple of the questions that were asked previously on the MS-
Backed, proposed before. Okay.
Yes. From the MS Taxation Program at Queens, I have information that Baruch was consulted, and, okay, moving forward with this proposal, and that the MS Intactation Program will start with a cohort of 25 and will grow to an annual cohort of 50 by the fifth year in operation. The other question that was raised was around the articulation agreements with Ostos Community College in Computer Science, and I just want to validate or confirm that there is one in place right now with John Jay College.
Thank you for those clarifications. So now, on to item 2B5.
Thank you. So, "In an increasingly complex higher education landscape and with unprecedented challenges facing the university and the community it serves, CUNY must adapt to become more welcoming to these significant and growing populations that deserve the opportunity of a college education. And here we're talking specifically of non-traditional students and adult learners. And so this is a crucial moment for CUNY to open its doors more widely and provide students with recognition for knowledge already acquired through prior experience in education. And the policy for the use of credit for prior learning is an important component for this new reality for our university. The policy for use of credit for prior learning represents an important move towards ensuring consistency and equity in the awarding of credits for prior college-level learning across CUNY colleges. In addition, the policy details the approved methods and tools that colleges will adopt over the next 18 months, with necessary input from faculty and procedural planning by administrative staff. For the more safe policy components that are indicated in the policy document, which include non-collegiate credit evaluators and institutionally-prepared exams, all colleges will be invited to participate in the development of university-wide standards and criteria beginning this summer and into the 2020, 2021 academic year. The proposed policy also reflects extensive research, consultation with experts, and exploration of exemplary models for awarding credit for prior learning. It also reflects best practices and insights called from the Council on Adult and Experiential Learning, including published reports on effectiveness of different prior learning assessment methods, academic outcomes, and case studies of state and system approaches. As this infrastructure takes shape, the policy will become a central fixture of our collective commitment to supporting academic momentum, timely degree completion, and overall access to high-quality, affordable education. This is a crucial policy that will allow us to recognize the learning that occurs during our prospective student's life outside of the formal classroom setting. And I present this to the committee."
Thank you very much. So I move the approval of policy item 2B5. Do I have a second?
Second. I can- Second, Meg Berger.
Any discussion on this point?
Uh, Martin Burke?
Yes, Martin.
Um, I'd like to thank the Office of Academic Affairs, uh, the leadership of Executive Vice Chancellor Cruz, uh, and Senior Dean Linda Zo, University Dean Linda Zo, in the very careful and patient consultative process that led to this policy. Uh, trying to draw together some eighteen colleges and build consensus about what should be done, uh, was a daunting task, and they've done a great job in putting it together and pulling it off. This should serve, moving forward, as a model for cross-campus and intra-university consultation for other academic policies. I couldn't think of a better way to do these things than they've done it. So bravo to all of them.
Thank you, Martin. I think that's very reassuring to hear from the faculty perspective that this was a great, great process. So, uh, congratulations to the team. Any further discussion?
Hi, um, this is Mr. Al.
Yes.
I actually wanted to add on, um, to, uh, I just wanted to add on to the previous point, the part that I could catch, because my call actually just dropped, um, so I'm back. But I just wanted to say that I was very delighted to see that this policy was on our committee agenda, because, um, I was, I'm a student at John Jay College, and I was the president there this past year, and we do have many adult learners there, many transfer students there, many non-traditional students there, um, who would greatly benefit from this. Um, and often times, uh, um, you know, when we're talking about education equity, as we're seeing right now, um, the black and brown students that are most affected are in these communities. So I just wanted to, again, give you all a shout-out and say thank you for really spearheading this, um, because I know that a lot of students will greatly benefit from it. Um, so I wanted to make sure that that was said. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's wonderful to hear, too. Hearing no further discussion, we will now vote. Again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're now going to take up items 2B6 for approval. Policy item 2B6 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the CAPR dashboard. I'll call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide further background.
Thank you. So as you all know, routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee of Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. The CAPR dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with the summary data. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include four new undergraduate policies and one new graduate policy, the classification of seven new general education courses among colleges, giving students more options to study the physical sciences, mathematics, and the humanities, and eighteen routine program actions. I present the CAPR dashboard for consideration.
Thank you. I'll move the approval of the policy item 2B6. Do I have a second?
Second, Berger.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. Please, again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, the item passes. There being no more items on the agenda, do I have to call for a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. I, I will pass, uh, put the motion up. Do I have a second?
Second, Burke.
Um, any discussion on this matter? I don't think so.
Thanks, Jill.
Any, any, I think we're all good on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Henry.